This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Start with Dale. With the office. It is a new term.
All right.
Okay, so we'll give this to you soon. We'll embarrass ourselves. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Oh, all right.
I state your name.
All right, I do.
A duly elected city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
A duly elected city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
Charters and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
I will faithfully perform the duties of city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Sign both, once for me, once for you.
I'll sign both.
Yeah.
My Adam come out all out your steps.
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna picture that.
Okay. Here's yours too. Say your name. It's much easier, trust me. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Rick Hobart.
A duly elected mayor of the city of Vernonia.
A duly elected mayor of the city of Vernonia.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Vernonia.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of mayor of the city of Vernonia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. You'll sign, let us leave one for me. I know, welcome.
Yes, thank you, because I do need.
It's so much easier.
It is so much.
Raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name. It's harder than you know.
Don't pull through.
I, Susan Wagner.
A duly elected city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
A duly elected city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One for me. Normally I shake your guys' hands, but we don't want that today.
Swear or maybe a question. I state your name.
Oh, no. I have to tell you, it's really hard not to do that.
These three people do that, so.
I wanted to get a certificate.
Yes.
I want a fantasy certificate.
Should have one unless it got left here.
No, I got signed in on Zoom.
Oh, I have it somewhere. I'll get one.
Don't have it.
Recording. Okay. Thank you. Goodbye.
Everything's good.
Goodbye.
Yeah, bye. Oh.
Normally I have that six minutes ahead of time, but. Good night.
Trade you places.
I'm getting, you can start.
Well, before we get started, I'd first like to say what an honor it is for me to serve another term, third term, for the city I love dearly. And I'm gonna try to do my best to represent all citizens and to do my best to lead the council meetings and have a good relationship with not only you, but staff. So I'd like to also congratulate Dale, Councilor Dale Webb, again, for another four term. Hard and congratulations Susan Wagner. And perseverance, really, I really admire your perseverance. So, welcome again.
Thank you.
You know, we have a good council, I feel, moving forward. And we're pretty experienced and have a lot of years' experience and some more than others. But I feel really good about the next two years anyway, so. I just have one question for this council. Are you ready to go to work?
Heck, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Well, with that said, I'll call the meeting to order. The January 3rd, 2023 regular council meeting to order, 7:05. I'll rise for the pleasure, please.
The pleasure pleads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have one agenda item I'd like to add tonight. And it's an email that I received from the mayor of Warnton, Henry Belisifer, I believe, that's how you pronounce it. And it has to do, well, before I.
Yeah.
About that, I'd just like to add it to new business and letter G. So. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
You said letter G.
Yeah.
Letter G, yes, new business. If not, would you like to call a roll, please? Or do you want me to call the roll?
I need a motion to accept the agenda.
Okay. Shouldn't we accept the agenda with the addition of item, under new business, item G, homeless discussion? Okay, thank you, Councilor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded. Council Ash.
Okay. Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Are there any presentations tonight? None. Mayor's report. We'll just move on. Any council committee meeting reports?
No.
Counselors.
Counsel.
They counsel mine.
Oh, they, on the public works?
Yeah, they didn't come in that day because of the weather.
That power.
Yeah, power.
Oh. It was on the 30th, right?
Supposed to be the 27th.
Oh, I see. Okay. So, no committee meeting reports. Topics on the floor tonight?
I don't have any slips. Were you planning on speaking from the floor? Okay.
Okay.
And no.
Consent agenda for acceptance. Consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for December 5th, 2022.
Any corrections?
Any questions? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the?
I wasn't here yet.
Yeah.
So, come on, let all y'all do that. Because I'm new at this, you know?
I'll make a motion. We see approve the consent agenda for approval.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Call the roll, please.
Counselor Wagner.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any unfinished business tonight? Okay. New business. A, staff report decision regarding green man field lighting.
So this staff report is from myself. I met with the city electrician to talk about relocating the boxes that are on the back of the green man grandstands ahead of the demolition. And we came across one kind of pickle that we need council to make a decision on. So the sodium lights are three-phase power. It's the only thing down there that is powered by three-phase power. And it's going to be the most expensive one to relocate. Potentially, if we did use lights in that field again, we would probably upgrade to something newer technology, less draw from the electricity, and potentially on different poles. Those poles, we would have to do some testing to make sure they would be stout enough to put new equipment on, like coring or something like Westo when they check their poles. So I'm bringing this decision to you guys to determine if we can just eliminate the three-phase power requirement down there and not put power to those lights. And then ultimately, in the demolition and subsequent things, we'd be bringing those lights down just up there in the wind. But I wanted you guys to decide that because it's kind of a. Might make some people upset, but there's, we've only illuminated them one time in the last, like, eight years. And that was for a movie that wanted them in the background. And it was about $375 for the turning on and how long they were on. And that was just like four hours in the evenings. What do you guys think?
Oh, I agree. Oh.
Is there any, so there is no purpose to having three-phase for any other?
No, it's just whole of those kind of sodium-based lights are so much needed power stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
I also think they're so tall that, I mean, we don't know what's going to go there. But unless it was another sports field, that specific setup doesn't really lend itself to any other use.
Right. I think even if it was a sports field, we'd probably put in some sort of metal pole with an LED fixture or some sort of lighting light that's just football fields has or something, not nearly as extravagant or large as those are.
Almost similar to the skate park light poles.
Right. Or, I mean, you could do it how the schools are not that big sodium type anymore. They found a new version for the football field at the new school, so.
Yeah. Any other questions or discussions?
Would they? Well, I could say that three-phase is just unheard of hardly anymore. I mean, if you're at a sawmill.
Right, or if we were going to put some new structure there that had a good load that it needed, but you can't really put a structure there in the floodplain that's not kind of open in the underneath.
Yeah.
And any electrical need can come from what's there according to the city electrician.
So I'm assuming they'll just terminate those that power from wherever they.
Yeah, so he was communicating with Amy Mullens from Westo to talk about how they would kind of eliminate that, what that looks like as far as his tasks and the Westo's tasks.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with, they'll eat that out. I think those power poles are probably going to be subject within the next 10 years anyhow, so.
Yes. The school left there 10 years ago. Nothing's been new since then. And who knows? I don't have any data on when they were put in before that. Like, were they replaced 12 years ago, 15 years ago? I don't know.
This is just a thought I had last night. Has Lifeflight ever had an issue landing down there in the dark at night? I mean.
Well, they have a beacon. And we talked about making sure that those, there's red lights on the top and that those beacons would remain and be replaced. If we did take down the pole, we would put a new beacon up. But, yeah, the light, I don't know. And I can check with them before we, you know, pull the trigger. But the beacon is what I think is the most important for them. And that's on the top of the pole closest to the snack shack. It's like a red light that beacons there.
Well, we're not turning the lights on when Lifeflight lands, so they're not using them currently.
No, that light isn't part of that. That light isn't the three-phase, the beacon.
I mean.
Beacon stays.
The three-phase now.
Right, right. They're just using the beacon, which I talked to Blake about. We need to have that remain. And then if we did take the poles down, we'd have to replace it to whatever they needed. They'd really like to move more central in not necessarily there. I've been talking to, actually Donald's daughter about, because they would really like to be kind of straight off that, where the car show comes into Spencer Park. So we've been talking about what that would look like and what would need to not be in the area as far as planting trees or any other infrastructure. So they may be changing sites to a different part of Spencer ultimately, but we'd put a beacon in for them anyway. Or if we do the camera tower, you know, different poles or the lightning rod with the beacon, we can do a lot of stuff like that.
Okay.
So if you guys, either way, will someone make a motion? So it's the official for Stefan.
I would move that we go forward with the relocation of electrical infrastructure without three-phase, three-phase power.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to go with the first one, to move forward with the relocation without the three-phase, right here. Without, I'm sorry, second one. Seconded.
I'll call. Counselor Webb. Counselor Ash. Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Wagner. Mayor Hobart.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Staff report, GorgeNet.
Okay, so I talked to you guys about how I was working with GorgeNet to, well, we were working on the services here at City Hall Police Department and the Library. And then in addition, they were looking at Spencer Park. I subsequently gave you this new map that they sent. Was the sighting of where they thought the most coverage for what we were asking for would be. I did give you their contract, draft contract, and then the draft bid. And you can see there that the total for the cameras, the installation and equipment, the hosting, the port fee, all of that, comes to $7,315, which they're giving us a bundle and service term discount of $7,315. So they're basically doing it for free. The only thing is you'll notice in the top on their quote is that the security cameras do have a monthly rate. This $9.85 that is the total due for supplying internet and voice-over IP for the phones for City Hall Police and Library and the Spencer cameras. All of that is still $1,000 less than what we pay right now to Zipley.
Per month.
So we thought it's a good deal. But I did tell you guys that I wasn't going to pull the trigger on anything without you kind of looking at it and it being what you guys thought it would be as far as what they're willing to put there. We will need to install a pole for the camera tower and two outlets, which I've talked to Blake about already. But he didn't seem like that would be any big charge, so, for the outlets.
Do those.
Yeah, so there is power that, in that corner. So where the skate park pin is, there's power there. It's underground. We were going to use it for the skate park lights. Ended up coming from the grandstand grid because of the pole.
Oh.
The number of poles, so there is power there. We just didn't use that power for junction box for the grandstand's lights. There's also, if we needed it to be, although they're showing it as a wireless one at the corner of the snack shack. And then there, the other ones are also wireless, but they're also connected to things that if we needed one of the outlets to be on any one of those things, the power is where they're pointing. So there, one's the street light, one's the play shed, and one's the restroom.
So pretty easy then.
Yeah. So it's not going to be a big power issue other than getting the pole. We'll do a little trenching in the grass there by the grandstands because there isn't, it isn't exposed and like readily accessible. But, yeah, not clear across the park or anything. Other questions or any concerns?
They talk about these cameras much or about kind of resolution or anything?
Well, so, yeah, so he gave us the name. And I looked them up. Did you look them up?
Oh, I did not.
Oh. It's typically what they've seen in other, or, I gotta pull it up here because I don't have it on my phone. I have it on my other one.
But you've reviewed it, I mean.
Yeah. And it's typically what they've put in other places for those type of cameras. The other thing is for us is we really wanted the ones by the restrooms, right? To get that close visual. The rest of them are really acting as deterrent, right?
But.
Because if someone knows they're on video, they're way less likely to mess with stuff. And the areas that we seem to be having issues, the old snack shack with them bending all the metal railings and then the bathrooms with all that. I think if someone sees your, if you see their faces, they're going into the bathroom, it's going to only be a process of elimination to, when Tim's checking into those, who did it? Who, at least you know who to round up, right?
Yeah.
Because we're not going to film in the bathrooms. But, yeah, so I think you could, you could go way expensive, right? Like the $46,000 Burcata that reads the license plates and does all that. I think that's really overkill for what we're looking for, which is deterring vandalism and kind of safety of the park patrons.
Is this all cloud-based?
Yeah. It is cloud-based. Which almost everything is nowadays. Which, that's also the nice thing because then whoever's on duty can turn on, can log in and watch at that time. And then if we need someone to have it, you know, I could have it hooked where it would notify me if it's certain hours. You can set parameters to notify, hey, someone's milling around in the park when the lights are out. Then, you know, the police would get that notification.
Counsel, aren't we in the near future thinking about adding some additional light to the picnic shelter and the basketball court in the trims?
Yeah, so the picnic shelter has the conduit. I talked to Blake about putting a 20,000 lumen bulb kind of way up in the ceiling so that it's not a dark spot. And then we do have two 20,000 lumen bulbs we're going to test in the basketball fixtures. And if, because the five, the individual ones are 5,000 lumens, so there's 30 altogether. We're going to put 20 on opposite corners, see how much that lights up. And if it does the job, then we'll keep those 5,000 lumen ones until they burn out, which who knows when that would be? Or if there, it's still not enough light in there, then we'll replace the four corners with the 20. They're only $127 apiece, but they give five times or four times the amount of light per bulb. So that's what we're planning for that. And then the, we're having a weird hiccup. We can't figure out if someone tried to mess with it, but Blake's looking into why the front lights on the bathrooms quit working at some point. We don't know if someone messed with the housing. But Mitch has gone in and tried to figure out all the things he could figure out as just a staff member. And he can't figure out what, why those aren't lighting up anymore. So either someone short messed with it to try and make it dark there at night so they could try and pry the door open, or I don't know what they were doing. And then we did get the, we finished, the fabricator finished the four kind of brackets that are going to go around the hand paper towel dispensers. So we're slowly trying to make it less and less vandal, or more vandal-proof.
I would just think of that additional illumination will probably help our camera system.
Yeah.
If we get it.
Well.
If you vote on it, yes. Yes, Susan.
So on page four, page, which is page 44, that's it. So the service descriptions, as applicable. You notice it includes all phone lines have built-up long distance, which includes Oregon and Washington. The long-distance package is identified. It doesn't seem to have any other information as to if that is just free throughout the United States, I presume, since it's voiceover.
Yeah.
And then unlimited long distance, please see reasonable use policy. So I don't know how that would apply.
Say, would, say that one more time and not following where you're at.
Four of eight.
Oh, at the top, okay.
Yeah, service descriptions, as applicable. So unlimited long distance, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I don't think that the city hall makes a tremendous number of those. But then the 800 service? 8XX, I'm presuming is 800 service. Base service up to 200 minutes and five minutes thereafter. Do we have an incoming 800 number?
No.
Okay.
I think this is just their boilerplate. What their service agreements are, we do not have an 800 number. We are only a 503.
Okay, because it says as applicable and it's just.
If they're calling, if someone's calling dispatch, that would be an 800 number, but we're not regular, we're usually calling their St. Helens line, the 503, not 800 as staff.
Yeah, I would think that is the incoming, not the outgoing, 800 numbers that are referred to here. The 8XX service, base service end up to eight, up to 200 minutes. I would believe that receiving 800 number calls, not placing 800 number calls.
But you don't, why would you get charged for incoming calls?
Because it's a service that they're providing as an 800 number. You have to pay for those.
No, I know.
I'm just.
I don't know.
Just confirming that the city doesn't have.
Oh, I don't know what that, I thought it was the other way.
Making 800 call. I would just confirm.
Yeah.
If you don't have an 800 service.
No, we don't. But I can double-check that ahead of any approval of you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wasn't clear on that. I Googled that and it actually comes up as call center, but it, you can do chats and do different things off of this service? I wasn't clear on that myself, so.
Yeah, I can ask.
Yeah. Sure. Need to use more than 200 minutes.
Yeah, and if it's something concerning, then I'll just bring it back to you guys.
Any other questions? Comments?
Any input from our IT department? Have you talked with them? I mean, would that be an issue?
No, they, we've, they've, they have been working together. So when GorgeNet was doing the bid, they were working directly with IT. What do you need? Yeah, they went over to the library and went over there and talked about the needs. So they've done all of that background.
Yeah, so they're.
Yeah. They're working in conjunction with us.
So we're doing City Hall Police Library. What, is there an opportunity with our Public Works Department?
You know, I didn't.
Ada system and all that?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't talk to them about that. You mean the stuff out at the sewer and stuff?
Yeah, sewer, water reservoir. I mean, I know they have a SCADA set up and they can look at their.
I don't know that they'd serve the actual site as some of those are the cell service, right? The SCADA's cell service. It's like its own point.
But the phone service stuff.
Right, phone service could be the one, the phone at Public Works.
Because they're about half of what Zipley is.
Yeah, we could definitely have them do a second bid and see if that makes sense for us. Yeah.
And I just wanted to make a comment that if we vote for this, I'd like to reward the people that pushed to help bring fiber into this town. And I think GorgeNet was the driver on that, so.
Helps that they're a heck of a deal.
Yeah, yes, it does, yes.
They also seem very eager to invest in our local community. So, I mean, obviously, they're waiving a huge amount of install fees here, but we saw that they contributed to the turkeys for. for Thanksgiving. Um, and they, um, for those of us that are customers, they actually sent us gift certificates shortly after joining a couple of months um, to RNS Market. So I thought that was a really nice gesture versus Amazon or something like that. All right. They supported a local business with those.
And the president came to our salmon festival.
Yes, he did.
Very, loves our community.
Yes.
No questions? Is Zipley on contract right now with us or is it a month to month?
It's a month.
And did you offer to let them bid this package as well?
To give us free cameras and everything? No, I did not. I don't know that they even do that. I can ask them. I think we're going to be dealing with a big corporation that doesn't care.
I just want to make sure we're staying out of trouble when we are going out to bid on things like this. I don't know if there's a limit that you have to.
For this type of service, there isn't a procurement
Okay.
Uh, requirement for the three bids.
Okay.
It's more personal service, professional service contracts that you have to do that for in the city. Or sole source providers of one product. But if you guys want me to, I could inquire with Zipley.
I mean, this is already less than half of what they charge. I can't imagine they would give us more for half.
I don't know.
Guess you don't know unless you ask them.
Yeah.
I agree with you. I think I know what their answer is.
They're hiking up their residential rates this month.
Yeah. Is there a consensus that you guys want me to check in with Zipley?
I don't.
I don't.
Donald?
I don't think it would hurt just to cover bases.
Yeah, I'm there too.
Okay.
I mean,
I can see if they even would entertain giving us a bid. If they're just like, oh, we don't do that, then I'll just note that and move along. Okay.
That would make. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
So I guess we're ready to move on and
Are you ready for a motion?
I guess we That's right.
You can
You can approve
We can, we can
Ingen on
Yeah.
The eight hundred and checking that Zipley won't offer the same dealer better.
That's what I wrote down, so. Since I got it written down, I'll do that.
Okay.
Um, I moved to approve proposal from gorge dot net and authorized the minister, we should, this order to sign it. Pending clarification of the eight XX service charges, potential charges. And requesting a Zipley bid. And if they choose not to, or if they say we don't do that, then
Move forward.
Move forward.
Second that.
And second it.
All right. Uh, Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Counselor Norman.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Motion carried.
Moving into C, Staff Report, Council Committee Liaison Appointments. On page fourteen.
This one was from Stephanie. She wanted you guys to debate, decide if you wanted to stay with your same committees or offer, switch it up and offer new committees to each other.
I have no desire to relocate. I personally have no desire to relocate.
Okay.
I am very happy to hear that.
So, anyone else?
Can I just say that the cemetery committee would not be my first choice? And if someone else wanted it, I would be very happy for them to take it over. I am not Bruce McNair.
I would I've been a liaison for the library for the last four years. And I'm also liaison for the, at the senior board, which I'd like to stay, remain. Let me ask any other council members if they would be interested in the committee, in the cemetery committee.
Or library, since you
Or library.
Want to give it up.
I, I'd be willing to.
I enjoyed doing the library when I was on the library committee. That would be my preference. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm good where I'm at.
I enjoyed that one too.
But you guys are going to swap.
Mayor and I, yes.
Cemetery was JR's.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're swapping.
Well, since I've already kind of in the process of doing some volunteer work up there anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Uh, when, when, when do they meet, Josette?
Um, I'd have to look it up. Mayor, hold on. They switched their one this month, so I'm kind of confused by when, when they really are doing it. Some of theirs have been virtual just because of um, so usually it looks like it's the second Thursday of the month.
Once a month, second Thursday.
And sometimes it's Zoom. If their members can't get together, sometimes Stephanie will just host a Zoom meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be, I'd be glad to do that.
Okay, so Mayor Hobart's moving to cemetery and Counselor Wagner is doing library. The rest are remaining.
Yep.
Got it.
Right. So I have raised my hand because your head was down. So I have a question regarding our roles as committee liaisons.
Yes.
So in our council rules, it's very specific what it tells us we are and are not supposed to do.
Yeah, so we did a committee council training on the flow chart of how the council member goes there, listens to what's happening. New ideas come up. They bring it to council, council blesses ideas, the whole flow thing. And I have that I can give to you. But we just did that, uh, in November.
Thank you. So that
So they, they all should be following that from, and committee members heard the same thing. Counsel isn't the person you complain to. If you want work orders, that type of stuff, you're going to staff. Counsel's there to drive kind of counsel's agenda for each committee.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That was long in coming, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. E, Staff Report, Council President Selection.
So Counselor Allen was the council president, which the council president acts and runs the meetings if the mayor is unable to. So now you guys can call for nominations and debate amongst yourselves. I mean, who's willing to take it?
Anyone who wants to make a nomination?
We're jumping with joy.
Nominate Dale.
Okay.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I wouldn't nominate people without that.
Well, you can nominate and then he says, will you accept the nomination? He can do it that way. The mayor can't.
I don't
Are you sure? You sure kidding?
I was, I didn't think we could just nominate.
You can.
Oh, you absolutely can.
Then they ask if they'll accept it or not.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
So
If no one else wants to, I am happy to do that. I'm familiar with the rules. But Dale has been tentatively nominated.
All except that.
I would nominate Dale.
Okay.
Is there any other
Motion nominate. They nominate Dale Webb.
No.
All except, and Dale accepted the rest of the council's approval?
Yes.
Sure.
Now call the roll?
Yes.
Take it formal. So, uh, the motion is that Counselor Dale Webb will serve as council president. Uh, Counselor Wagner.
Oh, hi.
Counselor Norman.
Hi.
Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
I reclose.
Carried.
Congratulations, Counselor Webb.
Yeah.
Planning Commission and Budget Committee Application. Found on page fifteen. No, I'm sorry, sixteen. Okay, Joan Holbrook Payne has applied for Public Works, excuse me, Planning Commission.
Joan.
I find it is John.
It's Joe.
So has everyone read the application?
We're just working to approve for Planning Commission, right? We don't
And budget.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Yep.
I'm not familiar with her, but
It's Stephanie's grandmother.
Oh, that's who it is. Okay.
I think you've met her. She's
Yeah.
Moved, purchased Sharon's house. I'm not.
Yeah.
Yeah. We were out there at the trailhead. Stephanie up saying, my grandma lives right there. Um, she did a lot of administration and, uh, financial stuff in her past job.
I see substitute teacher at school at times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, if I have general consensus from council, I will appoint Joan Holbrook Payne to the Planning Commission.
And budget.
And budget.
Consensus?
Good for me.
I like it.
That gives them Congratulations. And welcome and thank you. Okay, Public Works Committee Recommendation for Creek Sidewalk Issue. Page seventeen. It's been a problem for quite a while down there.
It has.
Yeah.
Um, this is kind of a pull push from staff and Public Works. If, if we're really to do a long-term fix to this, we're going to have to work in, potentially work in the stream. The culvert needs potential replacement from its kind of there's failings there. Um, so Public Works really is, this really is a burr in their saddle. They do not like it. They don't like how we market, even if the marketing, they don't like the colors. They don't want it barricaded. The neighbors have never, not, it's not, not an excuse, but the neighbors have never complained. This has been kind of Public Works issue. When we walked the Bear Creek and talked about all the different project areas. This was something that really bugged them. Ahead of us, gravel won't be ADA. I know they mentioned gravel in their plan, like a compacted substrate. That's not going to pass any sort of ADA. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to measure it for like three months. So I'd like to mark somewhere on the curb, measure somewhere on the railing and track that maybe every week on a certain day. Measuring if there is any movement before we go about pulling something and replacing it. Because potentially with that inter, interplay in the substrate, we may just be exacerbating our problem, right? The, the heavy flows and the rain is washing kind of around that wall. And kind of the wall's kind of losing its footing there. So I'd like to have us table this recommendation until we get some data that says, oh, it's an active moving wall that's falling in, or it's stayed standard for three months and there's nothing moving. If it's an active moving wall, I think that triggers us into being with some potential emergency funding with ODF and W, potentially with Upper Nihalem Watershed Council that we could get our hands on if it's really an ongoing failure that we can document. And if it's not, then maybe we look at something to tide us over that satisfies the Public Works Committee's issues with it, but doesn't like break the bank and cause us, because we're messing with it, to have to go into the full project. That's staff's two cents on it, but whatever you guys determine, we will do.
So when they are talking about, uh, in their technically third paragraph, utilizing on-hand materials and PW staff, that is Public Works, not the committee staff, correct?
Yeah, it's Public Works staff, yeah.
Committee. Yes, I'm, so it is staff of the city.
Yes.
That's all. I was just concerned that if the committee was doing the work.
Oh, no.
That that would create some liability for the city. Okay, thank you.
Is there reason for using white paint for colorblindness?
No, it's what the guys had in the truck that typically we put down white and then it washed kind of
But I mean, is that the reason why that's the standardized color is for contrast?
I don't know, but nothing has ever said caution to me and been in white.
Right, but you can see color.
But, right, but ODOT, where they marked the trip hazards on the gray bridge is bright yellow. So I know Sam in his job has certain colors they're allowed to use within his job. Pink is telecommunications. I don't think anyone thinks there's two telecommunications lines right there. It's what Mitch had. The store was out of the bright colors and he's like, well, it's bright. I'm painting pink. And we can easily go to white, but to me, that's never said caution, but we can do that if that's
It may be a contrast against the gray, like if
Oh, that might be. I don't know.
See the color?
Yeah.
That's what I would think could be a
That might be it.
Just something, maybe the yellow is still a higher contrast.
Right. But we can go and get white and put it over that. But we were trying to like alert people that, hey, you might trip here. And white typically isn't something I've ever seen as that, but could be.
Yes. I would think that if you have the white and do not paint that space between, that could identify that there is a
You mean like a rectangle, like down the side, like a gap of the
Not painting, if they're making sure that that is still dark and black.
Yeah.
And actually see that there is a
Sure. We can do that.
Gap there.
But if you guys are okay with it, I'd like to go mark a certain spot and start measuring that. And then we can paint it in white around so that people can see it. And then we'll check back in three months and see, oh, it's just stayed the same or it's on the move.
That's
Like, right, and just a little bit more background on this, because so, and not that the city's been going out doing sidewalk enforcement, but likely, I will. And this is where some of the community, uh, Public Works Committee members have some issues is if the city isn't leading, for example, and this is one of them. Then it's kind of hard for us to be going out to telling other people, hey, your sidewalk, you need to replace it. I agree with Josette that we need to determine if that wall is stable or not. This is, if it's ongoing moving issue, then we're wasting our funds. But then that's a bigger can of worms if we're there. But if it's stable, then we do need to come up with a solution, so.
The other thing I've seen too, that might be a fix, depending on if we get someone that really knows what they're doing, is the kind where they basically spray that expanse of foam underneath. And we lessen that trip hazard without really having to pull it out, excavate and kind of open up the wound and make a bigger problem. But it would have to be someone that professionally knows how to do that. Can't just be us with the can of quick seal. It's gonna, I know there's companies
Parafurmer or somebody.
Yeah, there's Yeah, there's on tractor companies that specifically do that, and that'd be a small enough patch that maybe it would suffice. If it's not moving, let's try that first before we excavate and save ourselves some time and money and solve the problem until we can really fix it.
So I'll pitch a motion here that maybe covers these bases.
Okay.
So I will make a motion that the city staff performed three months of monitoring of the downstream wall here at, is that Madison? And the wall is stable, then we will proceed with a fix to that sidewalk section.
Okay, sir, second.
I have a second.
Seconded by Counselor Norman.
Is question, does there need to be a what if it doesn't repair, if it does show movement? Your motion?
Well, then.
I'll be bringing that back to you.
We won't move forward with the repair.
Never mind.
What?
I, I'm trying to, okay.
What?
No, I was just trying to figure out if that was really a motion or just a direction to staff to do, do a job rather.
I think he's trying to make it an emotion so they feel heard, that you, we aren't just dropping the ball, that staff is directed to monitor it, and if it is not moving, propose the fixes to you guys. That's what I'm getting. Is that okay?
No, that's fine, I just, just trying to clarify in my brain what we're doing.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
Okay, Mayor Hobart.
Hi.
Counselor Ash.
Hi.
Counselor Wagner.
Hi.
Counselor Norman.
Hi.
Counselor Webb.
Hi.
Counselor Carrie.
Okay, moving right into the last new business item, G. I received a phone call from the mayor of Warrenton last Fri, this last Friday, and he's on the board of the Oregon Mayors Association, and he represents Region One, which we are a part of, as you know, is a part of. Basically, he talked about, and I'll read it, you are receiving this because we have not heard from you regarding a statewide request to join what is now over 100 mayors in supporting the Oregon Mayors Association request for funding from the legislature to address homelessness. For your ease, I have included a short and long version of this request with the narrative of what the funding ask is. Signing on to this effort does not commit nor obligate any city, your city financially in any way. It simply is a request to support the ask so all cities can be eligible to receive this funding. And he's got a short version and a long version, and then on the second page, he, the funds could be used for homelessness, response and prevention services, which may include abatement cleanup, environmental mitigation, affordable housing, capital construction or improvement costs related to homelessness, or affordable housing measures, community resources, resource officers, education outreach, food bank assistance, shelter and or transitional housing, hygiene stations, operational costs, outreach workers and prevention. So rather than saying, you know, as mayor of Renonia, I want to sign on to this, because I'm a weak mayor, I, I informed Henry that I'd come back to the council with this proposal to see if you'd like to get on board with this. I think it's a good thing.
It empowers cities to kind of request the funding if they want to, and then use it in kind of multiple ways that just as their own needs, so I like the flexibility in it.
So I think all of you know I worked with the community action team, and one of our programs is homeless programs. I know that we do serve some people up here, so I know, and I do know that there is a need. I would just like to, and it's a minimum of $50,000 to the city, which is interesting. I think it's a, it's an admirable desire for us to serve all of those in our community, not just people who have houses or people who have apartments. I think we need to serve all of the residents of our community, and this is one of the ways we might be able to serve those who are houseless, homeless, or in temporary situations where they need some assistance. I would just, another caution is quite the right word, that we work with, now I'm speaking as a counselor, with a lot, local nonprofit, whether it be Community Action Team or someone else who's working with the local homeless community, to make sure that the city is doing, utilizing the funds in the best way possible, and leveraging funds that may be available through other organizations. So support, yes. More tax dollars out, going out, but it's, it's, it's important. It's, it's a need that, that's not going to go away, no matter what we do, but being able to address what is here would be helpful.
So, any other questions or comments about this?
Oh, yeah, I, for goodness, I ran on the platform of trying to get around on, get ahead on this homeless issue, because it's not getting better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really not compassionate, what's happening with these people. They're living out there in this weather. And, and it's, and it's not good, you know, with our citizens interacting, I mean, we know we're having some theft problems with some of them, not all of them, but some of them, because they're trying to get by. I, I'm a little concerned, and I think Susan kind of hit on it, that if every city is going to start building their own services, we're replicating, doing a lot of, we're spending a lot of money on replication, whereas we probably have some entities that, I hope these funds are something that the city could go, okay, you as an entity, we're going to, we're going to give you a big chunk of this, and we expect this to return in our city, you know, economy of scale, some of these entities might be able to bring in. And, you know, same thing, you know, Portland, you know, I think that the mayors are kind of heading off, but we're seeing going on in Portland, because Portland's got their hand out big time, solve their issue with the state legislators, the new governor, and, you know, we're all in this boat together, and we're all going to need help. And you can't force these people off of where they're trying to live until you have a place to put them. I mean, that is the law, that is what the federal ruling was, that's what Portland's happened to do, is they got to provide that housing before they can move them off the streets, and I agree, they don't need to be living on the streets, so. Yeah, I'm all for it, I just.
Well, it just, it just opens up an opportunity for a small city, and we're, we're usually the last ones to get the funds, I mean, to trickle down. If we get on board with other seaside and Astoria and these other, in Region One, when we do need it, we, it might be available, it may be available, and, you know, I think we have about eight homeless, and I was talking to Henry on Friday on the phone, and he said, whoa, you're lucky, I have eighty, over eighty homeless in Warrenton.
Well, yeah, we're kind of a lucky in the fact that we're not kind of on the way, we're not a through passage to anywhere, so our homeless typically know or have family in the area, and they've just burnt those familial bridges and, but still live in the community. And we do currently use CTMH and Community Action Team a ton for that back and forth for services. One person was out there without a sleeping bag, without a tent, and Community Action Team drove, showed up and brought a tent and a sleeping bag, that we had the guy come back and check in at the police department and get some stuff, and so we are taking care of the people. We, we know them by name, which is very rare, that you know who the people in your community that are houseless, or it's kind of a rare circumstance.
Do I need a motion by council to proceed to get on board?
That you're going to.
Consensus and.
Going to send, sign the.
I could call Henry and, or email him tomorrow and tell him we're on board. Okay, thank you. Okay, business from departments.
So we don't have a police. And I.
Okay.
Jeffrey was supposed to have one, but with the weather, he didn't get his report to me in time, so I'll bring it to you at the next meeting, for the first quarter.
Okay.
Public Works report.
Okay. Probably no ordinances or resolutions tonight. Correspondence, Staffordport Council Rules, Stephanie included at the end of the packet. I read through them again today, and, you know, it's like Susan was talking about, the council rules, and, you know, they're, they're there for a reason, and, and, you know, from time to time, it would behoove our council to go over them and read them, and, and things are going to come up during the year that, you know, oh, yeah, it's in the council rules, and that's the way we do things, but.
So I was on council last time when we approved these, went through them. In reviewing them, yet again, there are some things that need to be updated and changed that I don't think we either caught or recognized the buildup. And so I would ask that we have a workshop to go through them. We have a couple new counselors that I don't think have gone through the process of reviewing these step by step and making suggestions and just confirming that these do say what we want them to say, and that they're comprehensive and consistent and thorough and fair, as fair as they can be.
Okay, I guess I could put that on the agenda maybe, or talk to Stephanie about it.
Yeah, so we could easily, for the next council meeting, bring you guys, we'll send you out an email, ask you for your available dates, because we do have potentially three meetings this month, but your available dates, and then work off that, and you guys could schedule it at your next meeting. That work?
Fine.
Schedule the time when you could.
Sure.
Okay.
Think one of the biggest ones that I found the last couple years was number seventeen. And that's, that's setting the agenda. A lot of times, we have issues and come before and add to the the agenda, and sometimes we question, are they, is it an emergency, or is it very demanding right at the moment to? I think it was seventeen. Or maybe not.
Yes.
It had to do with setting the agenda, I think.
Section twelve.
Twelve, yeah. So. But yeah, it'll be good to go over these again and discuss them, and that helps our meetings go more fluid, and, and it gives time, specifically talking about agenda items, it gives time for staff to do research and, and, and you counselors to do research and do your homework, and so when we do meet in a, in a public setting like we are now, we're, we're prepared, and things go a lot easier, so. That's all I had on that.
Okay.
Okay, City Ministerial Report.
Hey, this feels forever old because I wrote it before the holiday.
Last year?
Yeah, I wrote it last year. So I don't have a newer update, other than they did grind and do some refinishing to the ramps at Umatilla, but I don't, I had a call into the engineer to say, did ODOT come and inspect, did they fail, and are we on the schedule with them? And he's just getting back to work too, and didn't respond to me in time for this meeting. The demo project, I already stated to you guys that I met with the electrician, I also met with Trails End Excavation, which is the demolition company that did a lot of the flood homes. I sent them pictures of the type of roofing and told them of ways I wanted to save money using our waste management thirty yard dumpsters that were allocated each year, instead of having them haul in one and do a cost overrun, I'd like to just use some of that stuff as leverage. And I did send them the testing, so they're working up a bid for us, and then I have two emails out to other companies, I don't think they'll even bid us, but maybe they will, I don't know what their schedules are like, to get the three bids for that. Decommissioning the old dump, I did meet with the, or do a Zoom call with the two representatives that you, that run the orphan site program, so they're looking into how our problem up there at Odom's could meet. We went over Zoom and where the water's coming from and the different things. This would be kind of a hint, a hinge on that, we would really want this dump closed out before we're trying to potentially log the stands that are there and get it back into reproduction, so, which we know, we're on a timeline for access down below, because the property owner down below, their trees are getting taller every year, and if we're going to get access and harm the smallest, least amount of trees to get to our property, we want to do that kind of quickly, so I'm excited, they finally got back to me, and we're moving forward with that. The bummer one is the arbitration timeline, so yes, they had to turn them in, they have to turn their final statements in by January ninth. This collective bargaining agreement outlines thirty days, although the arbitrator is not held to what's in our collective bargaining agreement. They could take thirty days, they could take as much time as they want. Our attorney and the, the association attorney both had reiterated to the arbitrator that we need kind of a quick closure on this. We want this done, this has been long haul to even get an arbitrator, and the retired first one, and back to the striking, and it's just been a long haul, we all want it, so we're hopeful they'll try and stay within that thirty day timeline for their result. We did have an overflow, a little bubbler of overflow, it clats up more at the cleanout on weed, they did contain it with hay bales and treated it, we did notify the EQ of that. We're looking into, we've ordered the smoke testing fan and the compression canisters so that we can go and see if our pressure grouting that they did before the winter is helping, if there's still issues on those ones they pressure grouted, and then we did get a line to the lining company for the worst manholes up there, because we know it's not a sewer problem, it's an eye-to-eye problem. And so ultimately, with the ice and the rain totals, our fixes weren't still enough, we knew that, but we were hoping it would get us through the winter. But, so we're looking into all those avenues and getting people investigating it for doing those linings as soon as we can, when we can, so. There's a, the person that bought, Mike Peels. There's a, the person that bought Mike Peel's thirty-three acres of Melanger, so above the riverside. Her engineer is requiring her to line the manhole at the end of Riverside before she connects to it. And so we're using that lining company to get bids on our worst ones up on away hill and, or I mean Cory Hill and see what that ugly number looks like for lining. At least, you know, give them ten and say, just price them out. Let's see what it looks like, what's the ugly number? So that we can get those done, cause I think that is, without any homes connected up there, I think that is the majority of our infiltration is through aging or insufficient construction of manholes. Just from the, we, I don't know, like two years or maybe even three years now ago, we did the manhole manual. And we went and physically inspected each of them and they each have a diagram, they're numbered. We saw what staining they had and the different pipes coming into them. So we've done a lot of the groundwork that now if we just start addressing those worst ones and see how does that affect it? Cause I think in our lifetime, we probably don't have the money at hand short of some sort of grant program that helps us do it to do the entirety. So we need to start with the worst and start getting those off the list. The other thing that Counselor Webb and I talked about is having Public Works in the next rain, go to the worst ones, get a visual on it, measure it, and then work their way away from that. And then I did talk to Jeff, so the manhole on Third that's in Defless's driveway there. We know that one stays underwater a lot of the time. We've clogged every but, all but two of the cap holes because we know we need that for the release of pressure. But I did talk to Jeff about taking a storm drain there and to capture that water so that that manhole isn't underwater and a culvert, and then go down Columbia with it. We were looking today on storm, the storm drainage mapping and where we can get that stuff diverted so that that isn't a contributor. Because we know Columbia just keeps spilling down the manholes, comes to the bottom of weed. Clatsup tries to come into it and just hits a wall. So if we can relieve whatever's getting in there on Third, that will also help us, so. It's a lot of stuff I just said there, but sorry.
Wasn't I and I, one of the top priorities for us in the top five anyway? I mean-
Yeah, it's on your count priorities.
Yeah.
Definitely is, yeah. And so that's one of the things I'm trying to get the bids so that we can say, hey, council, the remaining ARPA money, or we could do these five with this money and kind of bring you guys the options there. Cause only certain pots of money, like SDCs won't work for that, cause we're not building capacity. So we gotta kind of play around. The other thing is depending on the price, there's always the option that we go back to like DEQ and say, hey, is there a program underneath you that deals with INI and sewer infiltration? And has a grant or a loan component and talk about those options too for the fix.
Yeah, we're not out of the rainy season yet.
No. And the event that happened, the flow from start to finish was about twelve hours that Public Works. I mean, and that's like barely a little coming out. And then when it quit coming out is when they stopped the clock. So it was about a twelve hour influx event that, um, where the melting was happening, the rain was coming down and the INI was getting in there and caused not huge belagio like it has in the past on Clatsup, like little bubbler, but then the cleanout, they, they just put hay bales all around it and treated everything. And then went back and cleaned all the property off and-
Was it backing up into their homes?
No, they have backstops. All the homes on that line have backstops now, so it didn't get in the homes. So yeah.
Or they can't use their facilities.
Yeah, they're on a patience to not fill up their own lines, but yeah, which is frustrating still. So, and we understand that is not the final fix. You guys haven't, that's kind of all I got. Do you have any questions for me that have come up?
So just, just to kind of tag on to that too is, you know, in our sewer rates, we really don't have an INI program in there. We probably are negligent in that regard of not having a repair program and-
Yeah.
Cause you know, lines are going to crack and order is going to fail. I think as we keep moving with this process, I think that that'll be probably another bone throw to the Public Works Committee to, once we get all the data and go, okay, this is how big a bone we need to chew. What's the logical timeline to start? And we're probably going to have to throw some in our rates to fund this. If we, you know, unless we get lucky and get some grant funding or, or, you know.
And a few years back, we did talk about, cause other small cities that are, have that aging infrastructure, around a hundred years old institute it stormwater fees based on your square footage of your roof. And it was very unpalatable. The community was like, nope. But then we're all kind of negatively affected, cause this is all aging every year and it's, the water is still coming. And so that might be something too, like a miniscule five cents per square foot, you know, some combination, cause I think that makes it more attractive to funding sources is if the citizens have their skin in the game and the city is doing this fixes so far. And then you're asking us for money, makes us way more attractive. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm still raising hand. So as you're aware, and I think council is, um, the city has been very successful with CDBG. And one of CDBG's favorite types of projects are stormwater and INI projects. City of Tomook ended up with at least five, well, I know four million dollars, cause I was the grants administrator and project management on that. Or the, not project management, but grant management on that. Back to back two million dollars, which is unfair in my, my mind. Cause then they also got ODE and some other money to do that huge corner there. And those were grants, not loans. And I've always been amazed that they, their city did not do what our city did, which is we took on our own debt in order to fix problems, because that's how we did business. But I would love once our current CDBGs are, I don't know where we stand with them. If we have the capacity to go after more at this time.
I don't, we're in design right now for springboard and we're looking to go in the next round for construction for that project. And then with the-
Right, go ahead. Oh, finish, sorry.
So I don't know that we currently have the capacity to take on a whole nother CDBG until those two are kind of done. Cause I do also have a multi, I have a $225,000 cares grant for the food bank. And then we have the planning grant with the OPOD. So we're kind of grant and project heavy at this point to get them done without the plates falling. So-
Louisiana.
And Louisiana. So I got a few.
And, and I know that, that you are very good at juggling plates. It is something that I think that preparing ahead of time and getting us ready to go, for instance, your five cent, you know, showing skin in the game.
Yeah.
Prior to, but I, from experience, I know that these, this project sounds ideal for what they like to fund. And the fact that we have not gone after it in the past, um, even though we have had CDBG, for instance, for two of our big buildings in town. I think that this would be something very, very important to keep, keep our fingers ready to type so that we could move forward with as soon as possible. You can have two.
Yeah.
As long as your time and, and money expended in an appropriate manner. You can start working on the next one while the first one's closing out or close to.
Yeah, I mean, if springboard construction got rolling, I'd have no qualms about. But it's like ahead of it, actually the contractor, the bid docs, everything rolling, I'm just like underwater.
Right, and they're not, I mean, so next cycle is March and June. Who knows how much money they'll have.
Right.
Here they, they still had money at the end of the year that they were trying to give away for housing rehab that nobody was going after. It's like, you know, go figure, but, um, you know, Public Works projects really are their, what they prefer. So, and that's where the majority of their funding is geared towards is granting for those. So I'd love to, if you have any questions, please feel free to-
Okay.
On the grandstands, is the fire department on that?
Well, I sent multiple emails and have had pro response. So I don't know if it's what they have going on right now, that they're just, it's too heavy and they can't even comment to me about a practice burn. But I'm like, what would your organization need? What, what, what are the steps? How, is that of interest to you? I mean, it's not, doesn't have asbestos, doesn't have lead. We could get all the things they wanted removed from their remote, you know? And I just haven't had, so I am meaning to kind of meet up with Dean and be like, what's the deal? Are you totally out? You could just send me an email that I'm out.
I'm sleepy.
Right? So yeah, I did inquire it for practice, cause that would save us funds, you know? We wouldn't have to, you'd pay some sort of stipend to them for doing that, but.
Didn't you get the results on the rough material from, that Mitch took the other day?
Yeah, he did, um, Alex does not believe that it's hot torch. He believes it's the kind we can throw away without bagging.
Great.
But, so if we brought our unit down there, that would save us some money. They could just dump that right. Basically, he's thinking it sits like this. He would remove these supports and that roof would just come flat and they would just peel it from there. And then they have an onsite grinder, so they basically come and grind it into nothing and pull out.
Three days.
They said it would take them three days.
Wow, yeah.
So.
I'd almost rather go that route than burning it even.
Yeah.
Got a big mess on you.
Yeah, left.
Yeah, so once I get the bid from him, then I'll be proposing to you guys where I think that funding could come from.
It may also be just a source, I don't know. I worry about that.
What?
That people won't like watching it burn.
Yeah.
Oh.
That's true.
A lot of attention.
I think a lot of people down there, I think, I think it's a mix.
Yeah, I think it is a mix.
Absolutely.
Trails End, weren't they also the people that did the, the school demo?
Yeah.
Yeah, same.
It's Dean Larson, Custom Excavation and Trails End Recovery is the, is the demo side of it.
Gotcha.
How to have story, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you may try Rob Davis up at the fire department.
Okay.
I'll get you.
Okay.
He seems to be taking on a lot more administrative duties up there.
Okay.
And he may be more interested in something like that.
Okay.
Trying to get you connected with it.
Yeah, see what they'll do.
Any movement on the replacing the parts up on the top of the alley there? Behind JR's where it leaks the alleyway, that water.
The gravel.
By Oregon.
No, they have that in their work orders. There, I can push them to get it done right now. They were just trying to get through the holiday season.
But that water leak, I think you were talking about.
The water leak.
I thought you were talking about the gravel.
Well.
Putting more gravel there.
Oh, you gotta fix the leak for-
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any movement on that. I can bring you guys back a report from that, but I didn't ask Jeff anything about that today. We were talking overages and flows and chlorine shortage and all kinds of stuff today.
Okay.
But I can look into that.
Any other questions for the CA?
I think I'm good for.
Thank you, Jill.
You're welcome.
Items on the mayor and council.
Um, I have something I want to ask about. So I saw on the internet, um, uh, comments from quite a few people in town about how during the last power outage, um, we lost internet and cell service and phone lines, pretty much across all providers. Was only for a little while, but there's obviously a lot of concern among citizens that, that really leaves us high and dry, because these are happening during extreme weather events. And that's when our community is vulnerable and not being able to reach out for help or to each other. And those events is kind of scary. And so they, there were comments made that, um, maybe council could put some pressure on you to the, not the utility companies, but the providers. I don't know what sort of thing we could do, but I mean, I agree that it is a concern. And I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I did not lose internet. We had no problems with that. That if you have a backup for your power, you can power your internet. That is the, the difference if you aren't hooking your-
I think the bigger concern is the cell towers.
Yeah, so the, I know that Verizon.
Verizon hasn't typically gone down. I know AT&amp;T's been going down since their facility was vandalized and robbed, but.
Yeah, and then I believe their battery backup up there. And so when the power goes out, if their batteries aren't fully charged or if the weather's done a number on it, those drain super fast. And then there is no signal up at the-
That's for AT&amp;T?
Verizon, both.
Okay.
Yeah, they both rely on power. And then when it goes down, they rely on their battery backups. Well, the other thing that I know is that on Baker Point, they rarely change that battery or put it up, like it's a battery backup that comes up. And there was a whole bunch of AT&amp;T kind of angry comments, because they weren't fixing the one that kind of triangulates to get this valley so covered. But I don't know what the, I haven't gone up there or even talked to anyone about, did they lose it? What did they say? But I know that our internet was fine once we had the generator on and the modem rehooked up. But our phones-
Yeah, phones didn't work at all.
Bliss.
And that's something I think that-
That's the concern, I think the main part of it.
I think that that's something that maybe emergency or-
Management, yeah.
Management or whatever can address, because we have phones, because our phones tie into our internet. If there's no signal, if there's no cell signal, we just have it.
You have, you have a landline though.
No, I have no landline. It switches to our internet on our cell phones.
Oh, see, I couldn't even get it when I had wifi in my house. I couldn't even get my Verizon to do a call. It would call fail every time. So I don't know what the difference is, but I had it on wifi and I could see the wifi on my phone and I'd call and it would just, nothing would happen.
Yes, we did not have that problem. So I don't know if it, that's, that's an education piece.
Yeah.
That I-
Are you-
But it's also not, we can't say that, well, everyone is going to have a generator. It is a smart thing to have a generator, but they're not going, they're going to be people in the community that aren't going to be able to have a generator. So I think that, you know, if there's, if we're seeing that somehow the battery backups aren't proving to be sufficient and we're in a place where seasonally we have power outages, it should be expected. And maybe we need to say that some attention needs to be brought to it, they need to.
Or maybe even a generator that you just, someone from Verizon goes, Dolph's got something to say.
Well, my experience was sometimes, whether I hooked the generator up, the power come back on. Sometimes my internet would come back, sometimes it wouldn't, and I'd have to call Zipley. They'd have to do something, then it would come up. I called them three times and expressed the last time I was getting pretty frustrated. It was very inconvenient that they need to do something. And this is happening when the power is going out. That it doesn't always come back. A couple of times I was able to shut the power off and plug the boxes, plug them back in, it worked. Other times it didn't.
Well, that's the key. You have to reboot, reboot your, um, hold on, or-
I, I, I still, I think that it's an education piece that we can provide to the community. That if you, you know, if you don't have signal, if you don't have this, these are some of the things to try first. Or who is your backup system? You know, who's your buddy? You can connect with that does have signal that might have a generator. Because this community always pulls together when there's a problem. I mean, we were brand new when we had the flood and I mean, it was neighbor came by and said, do you need a generator? I'm going to town. I'll buy you one. It's like, sure. You know, it was, it's just amazing how we pulled together, but providing information and providing education to people who now know, you know, they may be new to town. Now you know there's going to be seasonal outages. This is what you can do. These are the steps to take. And if you give them packets, I mean, that's what we used to do for flood, for flood or after flood and, and you prepare, this is what to do in case of.
Yeah.
And do we still have an emergency? What's the name of the group that used to meet?
CERT.
CERT.
We don't have a functioning CERT at this time.
Is it possible with the new chief that that'll?
It's usually through emergency management and the fire department. It's like a all agencies kind of development. We, we have people that I think are still certified to be part of CERT, but I think as a collective group that hasn't gelled right. I don't know why exactly because I'm not part of it, but, but I can definitely talk to emergency management about pushing the cell towers to have everything they need up there so that when the power goes out, a minimum, we can get that. And then, yeah, we need to kind of redo a public education of it, like we do in the spring, right? It's fall time. Do you have your 72 hour food stores? Do you have water? Do you have this? Do you have that? I mean, we kind of forget after so many events that there are people that have moved out here that probably don't even know, oh, I should grab two cans extra every shopping trip throughout the summer when it's cheap because I'm going to need it in the winter. Yeah.
Agreed.
We can definitely do that.
Uh, yeah, to me, I, I mean, a public education number hurts, but I think the cell tower is a concern.
Yeah, it was nerve wracking for us because I'm like, I'm on wifi. Why isn't it doing? And we were just like, what are we, like, it was kind of freaking us out.
So the wifi from the school parking lot was pristine the whole time.
No, my wifi worked on the, to power up the TV for the kid to play video games, but it wouldn't make my phone call anybody. I don't know if it was like a weird, when that power went out, it severed something they needed to reset in their, their mainframe. But I know a lot of people couldn't get their phone to work.
Get on for a while.
Yeah.
And I mean, most of the feedback I saw was from people I know have been here a long time. That's not, hasn't been that long.
No, it hasn't been. I mean, my, when my husband was on AT&amp;T, it would happen a while, but Verizon's never gone dark for me.
Yeah.
And I've had my phone for eight years or something. Yeah, it was, it was nerve wracking.
Very, very good service with Verizon. In fact, I used to be an AT&amp;T customer for years.
Yeah.
And I switched over, gosh, over 20 years ago. Or not that long with.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
Quite a while ago.
Why they have it.
In just this area, it seems Verizon.
Has the coverage, yeah.
Yep. It's kind of interesting that there isn't more strict requirements on them, especially in an isolated town like this. I mean, I know if they lose, if they have a malfunction in their 911 system, they rack up big fines.
Yeah.
That goes down.
Yeah, we can definitely push it.
I don't, it'd be in right. Maybe we should do a little homework to see if there is some regulatory requirements here.
It goes down again. Try calling.
Yeah.
Because when you can't pick up a phone and get emergency services during an emergency, it's a big deal. And the real irony of all this, before I switched over fiber optic, all I had to do is plug in my old rotary phone and I could get phone service.
Right.
But yeah, I didn't lose service because we had backup power supplies and then the generators and, but.
Well, you had internet. You lost your service.
Yeah, I guess I never, yeah, I never looked to see if I had phone service. I don't use it.
Yeah, we didn't bother hooking up our generator. So that's, we went into town and I was like, I'm pulling in this phone, messaging down.
Because it's passworded now.
No.
And Donald with our Zipley.
I got it. I tried to do it when.
Really? Maybe they changed it. My phone is only on the guest one.
When Zipley went out, when we lost our internet, I just went in and unplugged it, just rebooted it and it came back on.
I had times it did work and times it didn't.
Oh, it did.
Well, Gorge Net doesn't do that.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Dale.
Do you have something?
No.
Okay. You're trying to get out of here?
No.
I had a couple of things that Josette touched on, the logging. That's like she brought up, it's going to be, we're going to have to be kind of timely on this. It's going to be a summer job. It's not going to probably be a winter job because of trucking. It's all dirt road down below, so.
Out by the old dump.
Yeah, the dump properties up there, the bottom and the top. So yeah, we're kind of needing some information off of the, the, on closing that and or the question is if we're doing logging, is that hamper the process or whatever? So, so, but if everything went well, you know, if we could do this summer or at the worst, the next summer.
Yeah.
And within this next two seasons, we should look at doing that project. Yeah. We got a lot of bare ground up there that just needs to be reforested, but we can get the work done and put a little in the timber fund at the same time. The other thing I want to bring back up before council is that 5% rule that Ben had brought to us.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I think we, before
Budget.
Get to budget and, and fate setting time, which will be around the corner here. Either yay or nay on that proposal for Ben. I think just a smoothing mechanism, I think makes sense, but we can discuss it at that time. If we can put that back on the agenda, get Ben back in here to.
Why did we table that?
We, I don't think we tabled it. Ben just presented to us and then he gave us time to chew on it. And maul over and then come back.
So instead of going so close to the penny, do we just do the trajectory and keep us doing this?
I know. I just didn't know if that, if someone had had an issue or we were waiting for something.
Yeah, I don't think we really even discussed it that hard, so. Oh, yeah. So some of that, I guess, is going to be staff feedback on they find out.
Yep.
And the other one, we could move forward on if the council is in agreement to put that on the agenda. Future meetings.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, anything else?
When are we looking at scheduling the review?
So we were, oh, we were talking about, because the, both meetings because of holidays are on Tuesdays. Do we just schedule the review for Tuesday of next week instead of Monday? Is everyone available for that?
I am not.
Okay. So um, I think Wednesday. Got to look at my own calendar here.
I can do any other day next week.
I don't know that I can do today because I think.
I could even do, I could do Monday.
Eleven to 12.
Monday, we talked to, it's supposed to be Monday, the ninth, Charisse. But the fire board's meeting about the ambulance service and we wanted to let counselors and
Counselors.
Citizens go to that. I don't know why it's taking so long to load this.
11, 12, 13.
Well, I'm going to be probably going 11th and 12th, so.
Okay.
Four, five, six, two, seven.
We mean four. Oh, you mean this week?
Oh.
Not this, I'm not available the sixth. And that's awfully short notice.
Yeah. So it's really just going through the projects and talking about issues that have come up or anything like that. So it's not a ton of planning for staff. Yeah, Thursday, I have a funeral, so I can't. At about, what about this Thursday?
The fifth?
So it's the fifth?
Yeah.
I'm good.
Okay.
Does anyone opposed to for my evaluate, for the quarterly meeting to talk about issues there? Usually it's at 6:30.
When did we do our last one?
In October. It's every quarter. So every three months.
6:30.
On the fifth?
You okay, Donald? 12th?
The fifth.
The fifth.
Fifth, this week, yes.
I don't think I'm critical to this one.
So, but it's good for you to know that what's happening.
Priority.
You mean other than meeting with you?
Oh, you did meet with me.
More than once.
Are you not available on Thursday?
I'm not sure. I have to head to Tillamook and Rockaway and I may be driving down Thursday to save time. I'll let you know.
Okay. Does the rest of you want to meet Thursday to get this one done and then?
Yep.
Okay. So January 5th, 6:30. Really? Okay. So you had asked the question about a different thing.
So I said, when were we going to do that? So now that question is very answered.
No, I thought you said something else. And I, I was trying to explain, we have three Tuesdays. There was some other thing you just said. What was it?
No, it's when are we gonna?
Oh, okay. So so we were talking about at one point doing it three Tuesdays in a row for the council meeting.
Right.
Two Tuesdays and one Thursday.
Yeah. Stephanie doesn't come, so it won't matter that she's sick.
Yeah. And I don't know that it's, you know, other than the list and updating it for you guys and whatever issues we have. Aaron, getting 2023 under our belts.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for, ready for an action item summary?
Ready?
Yep.
Okay. So we're going to about the Gorge Net bid, we're going to check with Zipley. And if they have some sort of apples to apples application or they're interested in bidding to us, we're also going to check the 800 number. Exactly what that is and how it will affect us. And if neither of those things are available, I will sign the contract. We're also going to ask Gorge Net to give us a potential bid on public works facilities and see if there's any assistance they can give us there or bids. Let Joan know she was appointed to the budget and planning commission, budget committee and planning commission. Staff's going to begin the monitoring on the Bear Creek Madison Wall for Movement and look into the concrete lifting contractors that are available. Should we want to lift it that way? Staff's going to bring back to council the rules, council rules workshop dates to the second meeting in January. Uh, staff is going to get council an update on the OA Hill Water Week determination. Staff's going to discuss with emergency management, the cell phone coverage during powder, power outages. And if we can push that as an emergency management group of cities. We're going to look into bringing back to you guys the 5% rate smoothing proposal. And check if the logging site causes the log, or if the orphan site problem causes a logging issue to logging there. And the quarterly eval is January 5th at 6:30. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
All right.
Thank you, Josette. We'll adjourn the meeting at 8:45. Meeting adjourned.
All right.
Yeah.
Still have.
Yeah.